Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for August 15th, 2023. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, that could have been a big mistake.
Yeah.
Oh, thanks, Bill.
All right, Kim, can you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Boyce?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Cor?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour? Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you. Great, thank you, Kim. Before we move on to agenda approval, I do want to give everyone a heads up. I was brought to my attention that there is a petition circulating out there on the internet saying that the Kent City Council was going to be addressing the Hometown Suites Hotel on the West Hill on our agenda this evening. That is absolutely not correct. It is not on our agenda. It will not ever be on the Kent City Council's agenda. That proposed project is something that is being considered but currently on hold by the King County Regional Homeless Authority and King County Government. So the city of Kent does not have any say or authority or decision-making power there. What I can tell you all is that we have been talking to them to try and stay abreast of what's happening, and that is how I know that it is currently on hold. Our major request as a city was that they not move forward and do anything without robust community engagement, no decisions being made. So we have been asking them for quite some time to please hold some community meetings where folks would have an opportunity to weigh in with their concerns as well as get questions answered. That has not occurred. But in my conversation with the county, as late as last Thursday, what I have been told is that the concept of that hotel being a relocation facility for some homeless camps down on the Green River is currently on hold, but want to let everyone know that this body does not have any funding, any decision-making, any stake in that conversation short of the fact that it's in the city of Kent. So everyone is welcome to provide public comment, but I just wanted to let you know if you're here for that as public comment, that's sort of where things are at. So just wanted to put that out there before we moved forward. All right, next item on our actual agenda is approval of the agenda. Changes? Do we have, is item G on the published agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right. If there are no changes to the agenda, a motion would be in order to approve.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, that brings us down to public communications. We've got quite a few items this evening. We're going to start out with, I'm going to turn it over to Council President. He has a couple of things he would like to bring up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, now we had Councilmember, we put a lot of time and energy into meeting, and sometimes we have to come to meeting on special days, right? So today is a special day for one of my Councilmember, and that's Councilmember Michaud. This is her 20th wedding anniversary with her husband, so let's give her a nice one. He was here much earlier to present her with a nice plaque and recognize her for 20 years of service. So I'm not too sure, not too sure what that mean, but I'm not sure I want to follow that path. But anyway, it works for her. And secondly, you know, I as Councilmember, I have favorite, right? And I have a favorite attorney that sits up here, and today is her birthday. And I'm gonna ask you to join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to my favorite attorney. So I will lead you off. Here we go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Tammy. Happy birthday to you. Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Council President.
That was good.
Hard act to follow. All right, we are going to move on in the agenda in public recognition, and I have a proclamation this evening for Church of Christ for their 109th anniversary. That is a long time to be serving in a community for a church and a congregation that has been such an important part of the city of Kent. They reached out and asked if we would do a proclamation. I said, absolutely. We want to celebrate that service. I had an opportunity during COVID to attend an event there, school supplies, books, those kinds of things, and it just really was a great insight for me into the great work that Iglesia Ni Cristo, or Church of Christ, is doing in Kent. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then ask, we've got several people in the audience that are here to accept that proclamation, to come up and join me. So it says, whereas Iglesia Ni Cristo, or Church of Christ, was founded on July 27th, 1914, and whereas they officially celebrated their 109th anniversary on July 27th, 2023, and whereas Church of Christ has become a worldwide organization with missions in 165 countries and territories, and whereas they had an incredible impact in Washington and our city, including the school supply drive for Panther Lake Elementary in October of 2020, where they donated a large amount of materials during their Care for Humanity Day, and whereas members have remained steadfast in their pledge to providing aid even in the worst of times, continuing to reach out to those who may be vulnerable and are struggling to make ends meet, and whereas the city of Kent is grateful for the work they have done in our community, now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of the city of Kent, do hereby proclaim that the city of Kent congratulates Church of Christ on their 109th anniversary and encourages all residents to join me in celebration of this milestone for an incredible church in our city. My notes say that Brother Valdez Flauta and Tadeja are here to accept the proclamation. Does that sound right? If you want to come on up, I'll give you a chance to say a few words and we'll get a quick picture.
One, two, three.
There's one more behind you. Madam Mayor, one more picture?
Sorry.
Thank you again, Mayor Dana Ralph. Happy anniversary, it's your anniversary, and happy birthday to you. Again, we thank the city of Kent for everything that you guys are doing for our community, and we just want to let everyone know that the Church of Christ, to bring awareness that we're also here to provide help as well. As what was mentioned, we've done our Care for Humanity, you know, projects, provided books and supplies to Panther Lake. Just recently, we also held a, we hosted a blood drive at our compound in Kent. So we love doing projects like this, you know, to help the community. So again, we thank you for everything that you guys do. Mayor Ralph, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kent is made up of a lot of amazing churches, service organizations, and community members, and that's what I think really makes this such a special place, is you've got a congregation that has dedicated 109 years to this community. That's really impressive. Always want to take an opportunity to celebrate. All right, moving on, we have a couple of appointments, Council, for your consideration. They are on the consent agenda. The first appointment is Kristy Dugan to the Kent Special Events Public Facility District Board. And under the Human Services Commission, we have three appointees this evening: Sarah Vili, Emmy Haru, and Amiri Nawab. I know that we've got Emmy on the line. Kim, do you know if she would like to speak? Okay. All right. Let's see.
Emmy, would you like to speak to your appointment tonight?
Hello, Emmy. Would you like to speak to your appointment tonight? I don't think so. Okay, let's just say we've got some amazing applicants to our Human Services Commission, one of them joining us online this evening. We are very fortunate here at the city of Kent to have a really robust group of volunteers that serve on a variety of boards and commissions, including the PFD as well as our Human Services Commission. So those names are all on consent calendar, Council, for what is my hope, your approval for those appointments. Next item on the agenda is community events. Council President, do you have any community events?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's the Showware Center, Cecil Showware Center, right down the street here, have lots of events going on, so want to list a couple of things that's going on, and hopefully you can be able to attend some of those. So on August 20th, we have the Pacific Cascade Mustang Club All Ford Show. On September 8th, we have the Comedian Cat Williams. On September 8th, we got Gerardo Ortiz and Luis Alfonso. On September 13th, we have the home opener for Owl Champion Thunderbirds, the first preseason game. September 29th, we got Junior H, about to show who that is, but, and then on September 30th, we have our Thunderbird back again for their home opener. And October 8th, we have God Smack. So if you haven't been to an event at the Showware Cecil Center, please take a moment and go and enjoy yourself. Lots of good things going on. That ends my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Next week, Theater Battery is going to be in town, and they're going to be presenting Deep Purple Wiggle. It's an organization that believes that there should be, art should be available to everyone. Tickets are free. You do need a ticket, though, so that they can gauge the attendance, make sure there's enough room for everybody. And it's an organization that Logan Ellis, a former grad from, I believe it was Kent Ridge Elementary, I'm sorry, Kent Ridge High School, that he is one of the movers behind that. Also, there's a mini recycling event coming up on Friday and tomorrow over at Kent Station. There is the Corey Wiles Band. So, good stuff.
All right, thank you. And one additional item on the 27th of August, it's the Fifth Annual Cruisin' Kent Car Show at Kent Station. So it's a great partnership between the city of Kent and Kent Station. Great way to spend a Sunday afternoon, lots of fun cars, family activities and that kind of thing. So hopefully I will see you all there for the car show. All right, we are going to move on to what I feel like is the main, the main event for this evening. Chief PD is going to provide us with a public safety report, and I think we are going to have a record number of swearing-ins this evening. So looking in the audience, knowing that there's a lot of family members out here ready to celebrate the new careers of their family members. So Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. It's my pleasure to bring this great report, which is going to be 90% swearing-in of new officers. So why don't we do that? I could have all of our new officers come up front here. We didn't get a chance to rehearse this, so we'll see how this all goes. Okay, here they are. I don't think we've done eight at a time before. I think you're correct. I don't know who keeps those stats, but I'm pretty sure that's correct.
Mariners.
I'm going to go ahead and introduce each of them one at a time, and they'll step out so you'll know who I'm talking about there. But I really love that we do this and we have a chance to showcase our new officers, our new community servants to the community and the council. And it's a tradition we've had for a while, but it's more than just a formality. This is making everyone aware of who their new guardians, protectors, and crime fighters are. So very proud of this. All right, let's get started. Could I have lateral officer Nona Steffes step out, please? There she is. So she is not in uniform, and that is completely our fault. Her uniform is on order. But one of the, one of the things that I want to point out right away is that she's, not only is she in-state lateral, so plug and play from a nearby jurisdiction, certified and all, but she has 11 years as a detective. So, yeah. Nona is taking advantage of our direct appoint, and once she completes her field training, she will be appointed to the detective unit and start there, and they're busy as everyone else. So Nona was raised in Kent and graduated from Kent Ridge High. Her parents still live here, so she has family here. Before coming to Kent, she worked at the city of Enhamclaw for 16 years. Two of those were as a corrections officer. She did some time on patrol, and then she did, like I said, the 11 last previous years as a detective. She had great insight as to what our department and our families like her at Camp PD because she has a lot of close relationships, one of which is here. Her husband is Officer Eric Steffes, who you've seen me brag about, present on, give awards to, and all kinds of other stuff at prior council meetings. So adding to the family literally in Camp PD. Something interesting about Nona, she has competed in triathlons for the last 20 years or so, and has done the Seattle to Portland Bike Race several times. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer, soon to be detective, Nona Steffes. Nona, anybody here for you want to give a shout out to, family and friends?
Yeah, I have my daughter Kayla here and our good friend and her best friend Tristan.
Okay, what about the big guy in the mincered over there?
My.
All right, all right, thank you. Next up, I'd like to introduce Officer Hadley Biza. Step on out, thank you very much. Hadley is born, was born in Grand Rapids, Michigan, but has lived here in Maple Valley most of her life. She attended Dehoma High School and then attended Eastern Washington University, obtaining her bachelor's degree, and most recently, she completed obtaining her master's degree from Seattle University. While attending the Seattle University, she was a private investigator. I don't have the details on that, but that's kind of intriguing. She was looking at our department where she could be somewhere where there's challenging, she could be constantly learning, and we, a department that had specialty units. And for us, we're fortunate, we can offer all of that. So that drew her here. Something interesting about Hadley is she played soccer at Eastern Washington University and is one of four children and very family-oriented. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Hadley Biza. Officer Biza, did you have anybody you want to introduce?
I don't want to make it too long.
That's okay. We're here for you.
Lots of friends and family here.
It's a friends and family. Well, welcome. Thank you. Next up, I would like to introduce Officer Caitlin Powers, please. It says Katie here, so I hope it's okay that I call you that. Katie grew up in the Covington area before moving to Portland for college. She went to Kentwood High School, you've seen the Kent connection through our hires, pretty awesome, and later attended Portland State University, where she received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in psychology. Before Kent PD, she held various customer service jobs, with the most prominent being a barista both at Dutch Bros and Bigfoot Java. While she was a barista, she learned vital communication skills that will aid her well in her new role as a police officer, and I agree with that a ton. She chose Kent because she lived in the area growing up, so giving back to this community was something that played a part in her decision-making. She wanted to be where there were people that were part of her upbringing. She also has a few family and friends that are in the department as well. And let's see here, she met some of her friends here while she was working as a barista. Go figure, coffee and cop, right, those together. Don't mention the donuts, that's okay. She also likes the department, what the department offers and the wide range of specialties that she's interested in working in the future. Something interesting about Katie is she is a big dog person. She's the proud mom of a miniature Pinscher named Nalo, did I say that right, who she rescued two years ago. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Caitlin Powers. Officer Powers, any intros you want to do? Very good, very good. Welcome. All right, moving right along. Next up, I would like to introduce Officer Amara Kendah. Amara was born in Virginia but raised in Washington, DC. His family is from Sierra Leone on the continent of Africa. Amara attended Virginia Commonwealth University, and before coming to Kent, Amara worked for a foreclosure defense firm, helping to protect people from having their homes foreclosed on by the bank. He says it was a really rewarding experience that helped him understand and embrace his desire to help others. Amara joined Kent PD due to how persistent Sergeant Tom was. We all know about that. And he said that he saw that there was a lot of opportunity to gain experience quickly in Kent, and he wanted to work towards being the best law enforcement officer he could be. He also noted that Kent has a strong reputation for highly, high-quality officers. Something interesting about Amara is he is a lover of cooking. He believes that cooking is a way to communicate love without being misconstrued by a language barrier. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Amara Kendah. Officer Kendah, anybody you'd like to introduce, sir? Welcome, welcome. All righty. Next, I'd like to introduce Officer Jia Wong. Jia was born and raised in Seattle and currently resides in Des Moines with his girlfriend and their dog Buddy. Jia earned his bachelor's degree from the University of Washington and an MBA from City University. Before coming to Kent, Jia was in the US Marine Corps, and after that, he was a federal contractor for the Department of State. The reason Jia chose Kent was because of the camaraderie and the culture here. Something interesting about him is he enjoys playing chess and used to be the captain of his chess team. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Jia Wong. Officer Wong, anybody you want to introduce? All right, all right, thank you. Next up, I would like to introduce Officer Dua Rana. Step forward, please. Dua grew up enjoying the phenomenal views of, imagine this, Mount Everest, as he grew up in Nepal, which we all know is located in the Himalayan mountain ranges, right? Dua's father owned a retail business, which is what his family did predominantly as a primary source of income. When he was 21, he moved to Chantilly, Virginia, his first home in the United States. And in 2017, Dua married his wife, I'm going to say this wrong, but I think it's Jodi. They have two children, a son, Jaren, and a daughter, Gianna. And they share a home with their parents, which is customary in the culture. And before Camp PD, Dua served in the military for about six years. In June 2021, he was honorably discharged from the Army, and then following in his, the legacy of his father, opened his own business, a fast food restaurant called Momo King. He still owns that restaurant, and it's currently operated in Tacoma Mall Food Court. Never done a business plug before. And because he's not busy enough, when he's not here, he's working at the restaurant. He chose Kent PD based on He chose Camp PD based on the city's cultural and religious diversity, and wants to strengthen the bond between law enforcement and the diverse community we serve. He wants to be a mediator to the public, where he can interpret the needs of law enforcement in the community. Something interesting about Dua was that during his days off, which appears to be like never.
Yeah.
He likes to sleep, go figure. Hang out with his friends, play guitar, and play with this kid. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Dua Rana. So, Rana?
My wife. Thanks for everything.
All right, welcome, welcome. Next, I want to introduce Officer Aaron Rankin. Aaron currently lives in P'op with his girlfriend and two children. He grew up in Kent until he turned 18, where he then joined the US Marine Corps. He was stationed on Oahu, Hawaii, where he deployed once to Afghanistan and once to Iraq. Aaron currently has two associate degrees and recently graduated from the University of Washington, obtaining his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He has also several certificates that he received through Green River College in corrections, law enforcement, and forensics. Before Kent, Aaron was in the US Marine Corps for over seven years. The reason Aaron chose Kent is because this is where he grew up. Aaron has always loved this city, and on top of that, Kent has a great reputation among the law enforcement community. He wouldn't imagine himself anywhere else and is honored to be here. He added that he can't wait to start contributing and being an asset to the department. Something interesting about Aaron is that he loves animals, he is obsessed with dogs, and would love the opportunity to work in K-9 further down the road. Way to slip that in there. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Aaron Rankin. Officer Rankin, anybody you'd like to introduce?
So, my sister Jamie, my girlfriend's secret, she's not a secret, that's how you pronounce her name, secret. Thank you for always supporting.
All right, welcome, welcome. All right. And last, but certainly not least, is Officer Victoria Johnson. Victoria grew up and lived in West Lynn, Oregon, for most of her life with her parents and older brother. She graduated from Washington State University in 2022 with majors in criminal justice and Spanish. Wow. Before coming to Kent, Victoria worked as a police cadet at the Washington State University Police Department and gained the solid foundation to help drive her desire to go into law enforcement. I will vouch for WSU's cadet program. It is very well-done. Our officers have volunteered their time, and they really get people prepared for coming into law enforcement, so good on that. Victoria chose to work at Kent because she wanted to work in an active agency with a variety of call types and learning opportunities. She has heavy volunteering background, and she wanted to work at Camp PD because of our ongoing community engagement. Something interesting about Victoria, she really likes reading, and I'll say. According to this, she has read 35 books so far this year alone. So, I don't, just for the record, I don't think I've read 35 since college, just as it was one. So, ladies and gentlemen, Officer Victoria Johnson. Officer Johnson, would you like to introduce anybody?
My girlfriend, Michael, on the staff.
All right, welcome, welcome. All right. Now for the official part. Mayor Ralph, will you do the honors, please?
My favorite part of this show. You look, raise your right hand, and you have to. I state your name.
I, Jia Wong.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
The state of Washington.
The state of Washington.
And the city of Kent.
And the city of Kent.
And that I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will bear, or excuse me, that I will obey the rules and regulations.
Obey the rules and regulations.
Of the Kent Police Department.
Of the Kent Police Department.
All right.
All right.
Got a final test, and then we're gonna come back and do a picture. I have to sign these, and you have to find the right one to sign with your name, and there's a lot of them over there, and then we'll come back and do it.
If you have a pen, step on up there. There's some up there.
Aaron, right here. You're right here. I'm right here. Katie, you're right here. I'm right here. I got it. You're right here. I'm actually sitting right there. You're right here. No, I'm right here. Actually.
Well, that's going on. Just a reminder, so they're in field training now sometime in the spring. They'll be deployable for, for full patrol, so they've got, they've got a ways of training to go, but we're very much looking forward to having them out there. At the same time, I've got to say, I was like a proud papa at their graduation at the Training Commission, because, you know, we're used to seeing, you know, Seattle PD and Tacoma or King County have six, seven, you know, but not us. And whenever we were able to get them their certificates at the academy was pretty awesome. So. And more to come, we're not done yet. So more and more hires, they'll have seniority very soon.
And one, two, three. Thank you.
Four, five, six.
All right. Right here, guys. And one, two, three. Thank you.
I took a punch.
Welcome. Welcome, welcome.
What year you at Eastern Washington, what year you at?
Good job. Welcome. Welcome.
My son was going out there.
That's again?
Yeah, okay. Congratulations.
Welcome, sir.
Congratulations.
Captain and Duke.
Appreciate it, sir. Appreciate it.
Welcome, welcome.
Congratulations.
All right. Welcome. Go Huskies.
Yes.
All right.
All right, overtime, congrats. Rankin, no relation. All right, thank you.
All right, Chief, just one quick second before you start, the rest of your report. Council President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I want to recognize you and commend you, because, you know, the city of Kent is a very diverse city, right? And you look at the officer that you brought forward, I saw four females, and I saw three diverse candidates, right? So, I know this is something you've been working towards, is to bring more diversity on the police force, and I just want to commend you and your staff and your recruiters for outstanding jobs. So, kudos to you, thank you.
Well, thank you. And so I have to say this, while I very much appreciate that, and clearly it was expressed desire by the leadership of the city, it was our team that got it done, our recruiting team and their efforts, right? And so, I'm really glad that we got here, and we've got more, we've got more to go. So.
Yeah.
I know. All right. Just want to make the community aware of some recent promotions that we had. In all of this hiring and training, what comes with that is the opportunity to also backfill and promote our leadership into the positions. And so it's an ongoing transition for us right now, a lot of moving parts. But first up, we promoted Sergeant, Corrections Sergeant Mike Armstrong to Commander. He now is the highest-ranking Corrections Officer in the department and runs the jail for us, our hundred-person, our hundred-bed jail, which is a very intense and complicated job, so he's on board now as Commander Armstrong. And then we promoted Corrections Officer Brandon Lee to Corrections Sergeant Brandon Lee. Also, both come with a multitude of years of service and great wealth of knowledge, so great additions in our corrections staff. And then on the sworn personnel, we promoted Matt Stansfield from Assistant Chief to Deputy Chief of Police, which gives me a designated number two. So I'm not, hopefully I don't get, you know, taken out or anything, but he's number two, he's number one when I'm gone. But, just kidding aside, he's gonna be much-needed support in terms of helping to coordinate our operations of the three divisions. And so very much glad to have him on board. And then got the opportunity to move Andy Grove from Commander to Assistant Chief of Police. And Andy, as you know, has been up here multiple, multiple times, just outstanding individuals, great human beings. I promoted these four, and as with all my promotions, it's based on their adherence to the values and the characteristics that we need to see in our law enforcement officers in Kent. But also, quite honestly, they have earned my trust through their demonstrated performance and performance and excellence. So I have full faith in them, looking forward to the great things they're gonna do for our department. So. Next up, kind of hard transition, but feels like we've been talking about this forever. Today is the actual start of the new drug possession law in the state. So now, some of the highlights of that are that, well, let me back up. It's the start of it today, effective today, and I want to give credit where it's due, it's modeled a lot after the ordinance that our city passed at the end of session last year. And so, this is close to what Kent had, I don't think it's as good as what Kent had, but it is the law, and it is a good step in the right direction. Just as a reminder, it restores the ability of officers to make physical arrests for both possession and public consumption of drugs. Okay? And again, I want to emphasize, we're not out to look to fill our jails with people who use drugs. But our approach has been very consistent, we need to be able to provide and connect people with services. And if we don't do that in a way where they're before our system, it doesn't happen. Volunteeringly stopping the use of those hard drugs like fentanyl just doesn't happen. So we, we will, the law, the law strongly encourages our prosecutors to divert, to divert cases for assessment, treatment, and services, which they were already inclined to do, and they are supported by our judges in that effort through community court processes. So this is good. Most of the penalties are gross misdemeanors for the violations, and there's different times. This is a gross misdemeanor, which is on the city's responsibility to fund and prosecute, which we are obviously working to be able to do. With that, you know, my concern with this is there's still a little wiggle room in the treatment side of things, but again, overall, a very good step in the right direction. And, you know, we're working up our ways of how we're gonna respond to this, and again, we're not gonna go and just try to lock up a bunch of people. We're gonna do it smart, we're gonna be reasonable, we're gonna try and be effective with the limited resources we have. So, that's the update on that. Community Academy. So registration is open now, and spots are filling up very quickly for our fall Community Academy. For those that are not familiar with the program, it is a wonderful opportunity to get the experience, behind-the-scenes look, if you will, with the what, how, and why of how we do business in the city of Kent. If you ever wanted to know more about crime scenes, wanted to know what it feel like to do a traffic stop or building search, wanted to make life-and-death decisions using a police force simulator, wanted to see what it's like to have the canine bite on your arm, feel the adrenaline like, you know, some people like to ride the lightning and get tasered, we have the program for you. It's a 10-week program, meets once a week, it's very interactive, and again, registration will be at our, at the department's website, and search for the Community Education tab, and look for Community Academy. And so, we'll, it's first-come, first-served on that one. And not on my list, but I do want to add, I can't believe I forgot, there's a really huge event this Thursday. We are doing Hobson Cops at the Ram Restaurant, 6:00 to 8:00 PM this Thursday. I'll be there, I'll be one of the unfortunate few who will not be able to enjoy any beverages, but we'll be there, just being, fellowshipping, answering questions, seeing what's going on in the community. So, look forward to that. With that, Madam Mayor, I will take any questions.
All right, thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Pedia?
All right. Big thank you to the recruit, recruiting team, you mentioned it. We have been collectively, as an, as an agency, doing an amazing job when it comes to recruitment, and, and also thank you for the, the upfront notice. We are, we're getting folks through the academy, getting them trained. It is a long process, and, and I, I was, I was playing, I was signing certificates over there, so I'm not sure that Chief mentioned it, but what this means is that we are very, very close to staffing for allotted positions, but that is nowhere near what the, a city this side needs in number of officers. So, little bit of confusion out there in the media, I want to make sure that everybody knows what that actually means. So, thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to reports. Opportunity for everyone seated up on this dais to share a little bit about the work that they do outside of these council meetings. All the members of this council serve on additional committees, making sure that the voice of Kent residents are represented at both the regional and state level. I will keep my report short this evening, two good news stories. Last week, we were able to host five students from our sister city in Japan, Tomba, Japan. We have a exchange, a longstanding exchange program with Tomba. In fact, I, as a sophomore at Kent Meridian High School, have to throw that in, because I didn't hear any Royals in the earlier announcement.
I know, I was listening.
Go Royals. I had an opportunity to be an exchange student in Japan through our sister city program, so it's something very near and dear to my heart. We had two students from the Kent and Auburn area go for 10 days to visit Tomba, and then five students from Tomba are spending 10 days here. So they came down, had a chance to sit and visit, learn about why they wanted to be a part of this exchange program, introduce them to one of our police officers, and then take them over across the street to our Carisone Park, to the Space Park. So it was a, a really fun afternoon. Tomorrow, I am hosting a delegation from our sister city in China, Yangzhou, there on an economic exchange, visiting Kent and several other cities, and, and will be here tomorrow morning. So, very, very pleased to report that our sister city program is alive and well. We have a sister city in Norway, China, Japan, and just before the war broke out in Ukraine, established a, a sister city relationship with Lutsk. So, it's a, it's a great way to, to have that cultural and just person-to-person exchange. I'm gonna end my report there. Look down to my right to our Chief Administrative Officer, Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quickly, just to give you a quick update, staff has been working on the mid-biennium budget adjustment. We've been meeting furiously on that, and we'll have something to you on time and on budget. And then lastly, we have an executive session tonight to talk about pending litigation. We anticipate that executive session will take about 25 minutes, and there will be no action afterwards. Thank you.
All right, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will give a short report as well, too. During our committee as a whole, we looked at our June financial, and we are tracking to our budgets, so each month we do look how we are tracking to our budget. I want to say the finance team is doing a good job, and we are doing a good job tracking to our budget. Our workshop, we had a, a good report from our co-responder, which is the Fire Department FE Care, is working closely with our Kent Police Department, and they're working together really to, to deal with crisis and not fight crime. And this allowed our police officer to be able to go and deal with criminals and investigation and so on. The council took some action during the last budget session to allocate funding to this co-responder, and it seemed to be working extremely well and making great progress. But also, during our workshop, we got a good report from our water system update. If you haven't noticed, on the West Hill, they got this brand-new, pretty water tower up in, on the West Hill, and then they say you can see it from Tacoma. I don't know whether that's true or not, but it is very gorgeous, and we, what we do know in the city of Kent, our team really work hard to make sure that our water system is, is, is updated and, and clean. We got good water in, in Kent, and I just want to recognize the team once again for really just going way out the way to make sure that our water system is continuing to be great and being proactive to make sure that it stays that way. And then I'm gonna start with my council member to the left, and they can talk about the report, and Council Member Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. I have two items tonight. First is, I serve on the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee, and we got another legislative update. Council here is pretty up to date on all that. But one of the- But one of the things was additional basic law enforcement academy classes, because Kent has so many officers coming through. Just kidding. And then our second item was Kirkland got some money from the state to try these Soundtrap Technology Camera slash speakers. They're trying to catch racers and speeders. It's in the very beginning stages. They're working with a developer, and it's a long ways off, but at least they're trying. It has a lot of issues, very early stages. I did talk to the chief a little bit about it, but I think it's probably years away from actually happening. And then, secondly, I serve as the Human Services Commission liaison to the council. And right now, we are actually going through a grant process, yeah, grant process, because we have ARPA dollars to spend, we have $1.3 million. And so we actually got 50 applications, and the need far exceeded what we have. But we are focusing on three things: housing stability, navigation services, workforce development and employment, and then a good, we want a good chunk of it to go specifically to youth programs. So this week, the Human Services Commission will be going through all those grants and making some decisions, and those, that final, their final decisions will come to council as part of the budget process.
Okay. Thank you, Council Member Michelle. Councilman McCoy?
Thank you, Council President. I serve on three regional committees, and I have not met since the last one, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Troutner?
Thank you, Council President. I am the subject matter expert for Economic and Community Development. While we have not had anything brought before council recently, I can assure you that staff is working on the comp plan and working at ways to engage the community, so that when they put that plan together, they do get input. I am also on the Regional Transit Committee. We do not meet tomorrow, but last month, we toured the electric bus charging facility in Taquilla, a pretty cool facility, and it's just a step for Metro to move forward with zero emission vehicles. I am also the co-chair of the Ryan Nine Watershed Ecosystem Forum, and we got to take a tour of the Chinook Wind Mitigation Project last week. Another example of how the region is working together to ensure salmon habitat is able to make it through the Green River, Duwamish, and out into the Puget Sound and grow and be healthy. We've got a lot of projects that have gone on in Kent and had the opportunity to tour those. So it's really great to see some of the projects in the region that aren't just here in Kent. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I serve on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, along with President Bill Boyce and Councilmember Tony Troutner. And we meet tomorrow night, 5:30. That's the usual time. But the big news that I have is that Taquilla Fire Department has rejoined our fire department to make it even larger. So that's pretty exciting news. So we now have Taquilla, and Sea-Tac, Maple Valley, I'm leaving something out.
Leave us here.
It's like somebody's.
Covington?
Covington, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Covington. Yeah, I don't want to exclude them. And then Eaton Clark is cutting hinting that they'd like to join, too. So we've become a very big department within the county here, so that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. And last but not least, Councilmember Fenture?
Thank you very much. The Arts Commission, I serve as liaison to our Arts Commission, and we received the final two images of what the new murals will look like that are going to be downtown. Pretty exciting. Med Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Council, we are continuing, we're up to Chapter Two, of the Social Injustice and Social Determinants of Mental Health. So looking through that, and pretty eye-opening, especially if you haven't looked into that before. Ties to Race and all sorts of information in there that should be known by all. Kent Conservation District, looking at our strategic plan, and also received a report on an artificial lighting project. Councilmember Troutner mentioned the salmon. This program, project, looked at the juvenile salmon and gave the outcomes. It was a successful program, and it's going to be expanded. And Public Works, as Council President mentioned, had a report on the water system. Also accepted some grants for sidewalks and roundabouts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Fenture. Madam Mayor, that ends our report.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we are going to move on in the agenda. Item number six is public hearing. We do not have one this evening. Item number seven is public comment. Public comment period is your opportunity to speak to the council and the mayor on issues that relate to the city of Kent or agenda items that the council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using this public comment period for political campaign purposes, including to support or oppose a ballot measure or any candidate seeking public office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches and must, but must instead speak concerning a matter of the city council's agenda or matters concerning the general business of the city of Kent. Further, in providing public comment, speakers must address the mayor and council as a whole. Remarks intended to target an individual on the dais are not permitted. Finally, please note that this public comment opportunity is for you to provide information to the mayor and city council that you would like for us to consider, but we will not be able to answer questions during the meeting itself. The clerk will announce each speaker. When you're called up to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and city of residence for the record. You will each have two minutes for comment. There will be an on-screen timer to help guide you in that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim to call our speakers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first speaker is Alice Campbell, followed by Kathleen Barker, followed by Ann Pence.
Right up, that microphone is short, but if you can stand up, and it will pick up everything that you say.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And start out with name and city of residence for the record, please.
My name is Alice Campbell, and I'm a resident here in Kent. And I'd like to thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to speak, and happy anniversary to you, happy birthday to you. And I also want to thank the Kent police officers. I had to deal with them on occasion. My daughter is bipolar, so sometimes she goes manic. But every time I've called the Kent police out, they have shown great care and respect with her mental illness, and I really appreciate that. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But I'm here to talk about the conditions that we have in SHAG, the SHAG community apartments. I don't have a list, so I'm going to go off on what I can remember. It's a place for seniors, it's a seating area to wait for your taxi, which probably would be fine, but the taxi has a rule that if you're not at the taxi door in five minutes, they would drive off. And in five minutes, maybe that's a long time, but somebody with disability, that's a, that's a long time. And I had a 6:00 AM eye appointment, and the guy literally drove off. I was walking to him, and he literally drove off, because I couldn't make it there from five minutes from the lobby. But from the seating area to the lobby, where we used to have seating, now we don't. We just have a small, little table that they put flowers on. And when you can't sit there no longer, we take turns sitting there. You know, somebody sits there, and they go, oh, you, you need to sit at your knees, they sit. And my fear is that one day, that table is going to give away and break. And so I'm just here to petition you, ask the city council of Kent, to if you can do something to help us get the seating, we also need security. I've been abused by a postal officer since I've been there. I know another lady have, too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathleen Barker, followed by Ann Pence.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have brought with me, I'm also from SHAG.
You could state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Yes, I live in Kent. My name is Kathleen Barker.
Thank you.
I'm nervous.
No, it's okay.
I have brought with us envelopes with all our complaints from SHAG. We have ongoing problems there. We have ants. We are being charged for bedbugs. There are many, many problems. Water leaks that, it's just, there's just too much to explain. We have written it up, and we have, I gave the information for each and every one of you, and we would appreciate it if you would look at it and see what you can do. We also have made groups, leaders, one of the leaders from each building. This is not just one building, it's all three buildings in Tri-Court. And they advertise, and we have no amenities, we have nothing. I had ants crawling up my legs the other day. It is just infested. People have bedbugs, and all they do is say, you got to pay for it. And we know that that's not true. They wouldn't take our checks two months ago, they wouldn't take our money orders. It's just ongoing. Thank you.
We're here.
We will, at the end of public comment, we'll admit those statements into the record.
I'm sorry, the next speaker is Ann Pence, followed by Violet Water, I think it is.
Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm with SHAG also. We've been having a lot of problems with almost everything that you can think of in these buildings. One request, is the chief still here? Chief, we have a request. I remember someone telling me a few years ago that the police would go through our parking lots every so often, and it helped make a difference, the reason why we're inundated with the homeless. We have our own tenants letting these homeless in our building to use our washer and dryers. Well, we don't know what kind of stuff is in their clothes. We want to keep our washer and dryers as clean as we can, and they don't need to be using them. We use them. But these are the issues of security. There is no security. There are no cameras for the outside, there's no cameras for the inside. We have things that are being stolen from our front doors, our apartment doors. And this is, and there's no way that we know who did it. Cameras would be a big help. We have people in our building that are also dealing with drugs, and SHAG is not addressing that issue at all. And it's very, very sad. We're not being treated fairly. Repairs sometimes don't even get taken care of until we have complained after a few months. They're not being done quickly. We have staff that does not really show a whole lot of respect to us, just like we're a herd of cattle getting ready to go to the end, you know what I'm saying? And this is not right. We are humans, we have our, our own needs, and washer and dryers are out. 50% of them were out for two months. And when you're handicapped, it's kind of hard to go up and down the elevator to find a washer and dryer, and then you go down there and you find out it's being used. Well, what do you do? Got to go back up to your apartment, you know, with your cane, your walker, your wheelchair, whatever. We're just not being treated like we are, we are seniors. They don't seem to be educated in how to work with seniors. They tell us we have to clean up ours after ourselves when we're in the community room. No problem, but they don't give us the right equipment. We have a dustpan you have to get down on the floor with. Some of us can't get down on the floor.
I need you to wrap.
We need a dustpan with a handle. Oh, I'm done.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry.
It goes by very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Violet, is it Water?
No, it's Lavatay.
Lavatay, okay.
It's a Samoan name.
Okay. And then followed by Pamela Roth.
Okay. Good evening. This is my first time in Kent, actually. I live in Kent. I'm a resident here for five years. I'm the Executive Director of the Tenant Union of Washington. My name is Violet Lavatay. I'm also a community activist. So everybody that's here that's testifying on behalf of the units that they're living in, we stepped in to help. Congressman Smith, also Adam Smith, reached out to us, and a bunch of people reached out to the Tenant Union of Washington. Our job is to advocate for our vulnerable communities. It's deplorable in those tri, in the tri courts. SHAG, the organization SHAG, who is supposed to be a nonprofit, pour millions of dollars in their ads. You would see it on TV. When they try to look them up, you'll see the ads. It's beautiful. Lou Pennella was the coach for Mariners, he's the spokesperson. The reality is, the commercial doesn't reflect the tenants, where they live at. So we stepped in, we're organizing right now with the tenants to support them. Bedbugs, ants, the living conditions are, you know, not up to standards. And we have a lot of, these are vulnerable communities that live in our, in our city of Kent, and we want them to spend the rest of their days, they should be drinking tea, you know, playing bridge and all these things, but that's not the reality of this. They fight every day for just the minimum bare repairs and things like that. We implore the city council, all of you, as we organize, to get better living conditions for these tenants. They have the right to live in not deplorable conditions, unsafe conditions, and that's why we're all here. And I'm used to being in the city of Seattle council meetings. I love adhering Kent, this is my first time. I feel like I'm in a home, like family.
Yep.
So good on you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Pamela Roth, followed by Mark Oberlautz.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Roth, and I live in Kent. I also live in the Tri-Court Apartments. I've been there approximately five years. And I would like to say that the FD Care and the Police Department in Kent have been so helpful with some of our issues. My building is kind of the middle building, and our elevator was out for almost two months last year. We have one elevator in the building. Some of our residents were stuck on the third floor. We had to have wheelchairs or electric wheelchairs and couldn't get out. If someone needed help, we were told to call the Fire Department to get people downstairs. It was a really difficult situation. There's ongoing problems. There are a lot of people that have lived there for 20 years since it was built. It was built, I think, back in the 90s, around the same time that Harrison House was built. My mother-in-law was one of the first people to move into Harrison House when it was built by the city of Kent. And I'm not sure what year the King County took it over. But we need more housing for our seniors. I do the best I can to help some of my neighbors. I'm a little more agile than some that have been there for a long time. We have some with cognitive disabilities that have been there a long time, dyslexic, or not dyslexic, but autistic and have different issues. These are not being addressed by the current management. I do believe that SHAG has been dispersed and bought by some other entities, but some of the issues we have are, we lose hot water frequently, we have constant leaking pipes. It's an old building. You know, it's, it's an older building. And we do have a problem with insects, and they, and, but, and the other issues I know are not an issue for the council, but there are some issues that are, and they're housing codes and human rights. And we are bringing these to you to see what you can do to bring any pressure to the ownership. And thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Oberlautz, followed by Michael Diamond.
Mark Oberlautz, I live in Kent at the Tri-Court Apartments. And I want to summarize briefly that the biggest problem we have is that when management gets a complaint, one of their first things to do is start threatening to evict you. They will charge for items that under state law, unless they have evidence that the tenant actually brought the bedbugs in, they're responsible. But they say, no, 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 it's your apartment, you have to pay. And those bills stay on their ledgers for years. And what's happening now is they are switching people over without their permission to an online payment program that is periodically taking bedbug reimbursements out of people's accounts without their knowledge. I have talked to them, I am a retired attorney, and they basically tell me when I tell them the law to pound sand. There are a lot of legal violations by the current management team. The prior team beforehand used to work with me, and actually, the joke was, is I was his ghostwriter for his bosses, because he ghostwriter for his bosses because I would argue it, show him all of the information. He'd say, okay, I'll send it up, and he would cut and paste out of my emails. No, they now tell me to just lump it, and they're very, very combative about it. And I mean, it's just a very hostile environment. And I think that's the biggest problem. So I mean, there are a lot of code violations in there, and there are a lot of failures to repair. Last thing, I can't prove it, but I'm pretty sure they wait until they get their HUD check to do their major repairs. So we only get major repairs once a year when their federal check comes in. Can't prove it, but it always seems to be the same time every year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Diamond, followed by Myla Diamond.
Hello, Council. My name is Michael Diamond. I'm a resident on the West Hill in Kent here, and I'd like to just bring attention to some of the issues on the West Hill and the areas around 99 and the Home Street Apartments, or the housing that Kent, the King County is proposing to change into homeless affordable housing or homeless help. That area between the Metro Line, those, I get the opportunity to drive past those bus stops every morning on the way to work early at either 2:00 or 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and it's just become a collection area of just people that are loitering and just using, just using drugs in the open air. And I've called about a bonfire at one of the, one of the bus stops, and I've seen a few people just passed out in the road on 99, and I've addressed that because of the safety concern, but I, I just feel that I, as a resident, I can only address what I see as, you know, a safety concern when I'm driving by. I just, every day I'm driving by the area from the Kent-Demoines exit to Reef Road, 259th, and there's tents set up, and I had to call the other day, there was a tent that was adjacently set up to an electrical box, which is the signal box for the stoplight on 252nd. And I think that area needs to be just monitored more for just public safety. I want to take my children down on their bikes down the sidewalk to get a hamburger, and I'm not able to do that just a few blocks away because I don't feel safe just riding on that area. But I just want to let you guys know about the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mya, Myla Diamond, followed by Kehlani Diamond.
Good evening, Mayor, and the council members. My name is Myla Diamond, and we live on the West Hill of Kent. And just the issue also, I know it's, it was, you don't have jurisdiction of the county regarding the hometown suites, but we have elderly people that live in that area that like to walk their dog. They haven't been able to do that. There's a bus stop, and in that location, there's, there's Highline buses that go through and Federal Way Public School that go through and pick up there. So I don't think that that area would be a right fit for the people that they want to move because right around that area, it's already a big issue. Right now, I want Chief Padilla, there's a homeless encampment on 252nd and Pacific Highway that has been growing for a week, and that's my stop to take the kids to school. And we will be sitting in front of the light, waiting for the light to turn green, and there's like 10 people there, and they have their drug paraphernalia just out in the open. So I just want for you guys to consider the children that walk there, especially now that school is going to start soon. They take the public bus and they take the school buses to just have more protection for them and also for our elderly in the neighborhood of Del Mar. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kehlani Diamond, followed by Alika Kuhn.
Hello, my name is Kehlani Diamond. I live in Kent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to continue to bring attention the, just like the dangerous area around 252nd and Pack Highway, around that bus stop area, a lot of people go through that intersection, and that's right by the Fred Meyers, which is like a central store for that area. And just in that surrounding area, it's a huge neighborhood with lots of elderly people and lots of children walking around and playing around and going to their bus stops. And beside that is even more apartment complexes with more children and more people. And I think it's been consistently overlooked, just people abusing drugs just out in the open by the bus stops, really close to an area where there's a lot of children and just a lot of people who naturally want to feel safe in their own neighborhood but can't due to this ongoing issue. And I'd appreciate just looking into more of cleaning up that area and making sure that just the neighborhoods in our area are safe and just a good place for people to feel comfortable living in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alika Kuhn, filed by, followed by Mike Fersimmons.
Mayor, Council, my name is Alika Kuhn, and I am a resident over at Kent, also on the West Hill area. And I'm sorry, knowing that today is not the discussion that's supposed to be for the hometown suites, however, I do also want to come back to that, considering what was already said before of how the neighborhood is full of lots of elderly adults, but it's also full of a lot of students and a lot of children. And growing up in this neighborhood for practically my entire life, I have frankly grown really desensitized to a lot of the crime that's gone around us, which I don't think is a good sign of how there is a lot of drug abuse that's around, many, many places that were, used to be bus sites, that bus stops that me and my family could just go to so we could get around are now known for being places where there is public nudity, or there is a lot of drug abuse, or there's just a lot of passed out people just by the side of the road. And just growing up in that, eventually at some point, I started to stop really thinking about it because it became such a common sight. And even for the schools specifically, I have seen like firsthand like the effects of like how this drug abuse and this unsafe areas has affected kids and their parents, and how many of us don't feel safe just being able to walk around and grow up anymore. And the fact that some children, teenagers, they don't feel safe enough to even recognize that how much danger could actually be happening around them because it's just become so commonplace for us. And I do think that while having the homeless shelter is a great plan for, there is a very big homeless rate around us, considering that area is well-known for also being like a place of poverty for a lot of people, I think that considering just how easy it is now to access things like illegal drugs and seeing all these bad influences around us, that it's affecting the schools, and in turn, it affects the students, which affects their families, and it comes back into a cycle. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Fersimmons, followed by Cassandra Lee.
This was three minutes last time, right? So my apologies in advance if I talk really fast and skip around a bunch. Mike Fersimmons, I live in Kent, and I'm here to talk about pickleball and the noise it creates. Last time I was here, there were two lingering questions. Is pickleball that loud? And what can the city do? So I went online and I found some news articles. These are all news articles. This isn't my summarizing, but still. Fall month in Massachusetts, the town built some pickleball courts. They got sued by their neighbors. They actually sued the zoning board of appeals, saying that the building permit shouldn't have been approved. The current status is a temporary injunction, and the courts are currently closed. In the city of Lake Oswego, their courts got closed after too many complaints. They have committed to having courts only at the larger community parks and not in the smaller neighborhood parks. Denver Parks closed four courts. Their news article explicitly stated the reason was due to noise exceeding the 55 decibel ordinance, which is the same thing the city of Kent has. San Clemente built eight courts and had lots and lots and lots of noise complaints. They had a noise, a professional noise study and could not come to a good solution. So on June 6, 2023, the City Council authorized a $1.2 million construction contract to build eight new pickleball courts at Richard Steed Park, a rural location backing up to Camp Pendleton Military Base. Council voted to close the eight existing courts as soon as the new ones were opened. And finally, Park City, Utah, on April 28, 2002, the City Council adopted amendments to the Land Management Code to address the unique noise produced as part of pickleball play. Outdoor pickleball courts in residential areas will require a conditional use permit. Public notice will be sent to property owners within 300 feet of the proposed site. Planning Commission will conduct a public hearing. Outdoor pickleball courts require a minimum of 600-foot setback from lot lines of adjacent residential properties with no noise mitigation. Outdoor pickleball courts may have reduced setbacks lines within a property owner, within 150 feet of a property, providing they do mitigation. Property owners will be required to submit a site-specific noise study completed by a certified acoustical professional. So they've basically said, if you want to set up a pickleball court within 100, between 150 and 600 feet of adjacent property, you need to have, as part of your building permit process, an acoustic survey done. And that is something a city council like yours has done. So those are examples, and I appreciate your time. I'm sorry it went over.
No, it's okay.
Next speaker is Cassandra Lee, followed by Daryl Jones.
My name's Cassandra Lee, and I live in Kent, Washington. My purpose here is that we have a drug house that's, my condominium complex is on the corner of 200 and 108. There's a known drug house on 200. I called the mayor's office in regards to it. I did get a call back from the Police Department indicating that it was a known drug house. It was some, an elderly person that's been taken advantage of, and they are aware of the situation. This has gone on for over a year. Because of where our condominium complex is located, we're getting the traffic. They've torn our gates open and what have you. So we're constantly seeing those individuals that are coming in and out, going to this drug house, and we're more impacted because we are on that main thoroughway. So I'm here just to say, what can we do as a community to shut this drug house down? What, if we, if our owners, you know, renters that are there, if there's something that we can do to assist the police, we will do it. But where that location is, it's a bus stop for the elementary school, Glen Ridge Elementary. And my granddaughter, well, she's no longer there, but the mayor was at her school, and she asked me, Nana, do you want me? I should have said something to the mayor for you. And I said, that's fine, Taylor, I will tell her. But again, I'm just here to find out what we can do as a community to shut this drug house down because it's been, it's always been a quiet area, and we want to, we want it back. So what can we do?
Thank you.
All right?
We will follow up.
Okay.
Our final speaker. I see the chief waving his hand in the back and pointing. If you want to go right back there, he can.
I'll save it in the last one.
Thank you.
Daryl Jones from Kent, and I'd like to talk to you tonight about customer service and the level of service provided by employees within two departments here in Kent, both which were actually discussed tonight, human services as well as Public Works, which happens to deal with the water system. Now Walmart, Safeway, these other private sector employers have customers, and so do the many departments here in Kent, except in Kent, of course, those customers are the businesses and the residents that actually live out here in Kent. Now, in the private sectors, hey, take Safeway, for instance. They do their best to provide an excellent customer service experience because if they don't, those customers will just pick up and take their money somewhere else. Now, in the private, excuse me, in the public sector, in this case in Kent, I find that some of its customers are not given the courtesy and respect that are at the core of great customer service. So take, for instance, this Wednesday of last week, okay? The Public Works was supposed to do some, replace a water main on State Avenue. Water was supposed to be cut off from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Water was not turned back on until 4:00 PM, and it's not because there was some sudden surprise. They didn't have the parts, and they knew they didn't have the parts before they began, before they started work. Chief knew he did not have those parts and just hoped that they arrived before 3:00 o'clock. No consideration was given to the residents or the businesses that lost their water. Just, oh, well, they could do without it for four hours. Let's just keep working when it should have been rescheduled. As it relates to human services, they never appeared to answer the telephone, okay? I called, two weeks ago I called, it took them a week to call me back. So long I had forgotten what I'd, that I'd even called them on the phone. And it's seven days and counting since I called them last week, and I still haven't gotten a response. If I was a victim of domestic violence looking for shelter, I might have been beaten to death before I got a response from them. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, that was the last public speaker, and then I do have this public comment that was submitted. All right, we will go ahead and take that into the record. Thank you, everyone, for coming and providing a public comment, and we will be following up on several of these issues. Thanks for taking your time this evening. All right, we are now going to move on to the next item on the agenda, the consent calendar. We have items A through G, and these are items that the council has addressed at previous committee meetings, everything, opportunity to have a conversation, ask questions, and they've moved out of committee without controversy. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Sumo, second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Item number nine is other business, and we do not have any this evening, and item number 10 is bids, also no bids this evening. That brings us down to executive session. Council will be going into executive session to discuss current or potential litigation. Everyone, I would ask at this point that you clear council chambers. Pat, about how long will be, will be in executive session?
Anticipate about 25 minutes.
Okay, so we've got about 25 minutes. Council will reconvene. There will not be any action taken. We will simply come back into open session to adjourn the meeting. So with that, if I could ask everyone to clear council chambers. Thank you all very much for taking the time to come this evening. Thank you all very much for taking the time to come this evening.
You want me to sign that or do I already know?
So, whatever you wanna do chief.
If you're ready, whatever gets you out.